So, so, all meeting to order. Um, I'd like to tell this to my dad. So, this is the meeting, so I do tell him. Um, did anybody have any public comment? This is how we're happy to do it. And everybody said I didn't hear any. All right, so, P, we're on to the committee reports and board of communications. Um, Lick, you get?
Thank you. Um, yes, so, just a few, um, things going on. I tend to know, it went back to the Friday. The, um, the S D E forum, they had a forum with our, with Wizzle Tucker, and it was for one of his members, he's superintendent, so it was basically an open forum. And they, they asked us, the group breakout room, they asked us what we thought of what S D E was doing well, what could be improved on, um, we talked about learning laws, mental health, S E L, parenting, and staff issues. So, that will also be our kind of letting know when anything happens and hearing what, uh, what we thought we were talking about. But, uh, it was a good opportunity for us to share the issues off to the S D E and, uh, and show me the information about what's going on in what governance and what's going on with that. Uh, we are waiting in the house for the end of the year with, um, with Fred, and, uh, we truly was left to share again, so I would take the reins from July. So, um, but I look forward to that because, uh, you're all from along the way.
Yes.
Not just about me, it'll be a tale, it's about having a theory of what is behind it and what we do for the next school year. Also important, um, is the legislative rapport that's being held by P, the Van, D, and I O's. We've been going through that for several years. That will be on June fourteenth, again, this will be a virtual one again. And, uh, so we're really hoping for, uh, good, um, good participation. And we know the legislature will be ending on May, and, uh, so we hope that we have at least some legislators that will come back for the legislative rapport. And also very important is the N S B A is holding the, um, hosting the advocacy institute. Normally I attend this in January in D C. Now it'll be virtual, now it's gonna be online, and it's gonna be June eighth through June tenth. So, I encourage you to, to participate, to come. We do have a, a very great agenda, and Mr. Carter will also be speaking along with other congressmen and senators that will be joining us for, for the three-day, um, symposium. So, we do the thanks on that, and, uh, this is our annual advocacy week. We've not been at the Hill, obviously, for the past years, but this is our way on also, um, you know, presenting ourselves and talking to our, uh, our, you know, Washington, who have got what's going on around the country within education, and, uh, so that would be of interest. And that's it for me. So, you'll send us a link. I will send you links to everything. You're ready to register for this, again, you can register for this. And, uh, the nice part about this is that you can register, video of the register, and, um, you can also archive this for that up to two or three months later. So, that's the nice part about that, not everybody can leave here for three straight days. Uh, so, it's something that you can go back and archive if you need to, and get the data, and, uh, and the sessions, and, uh, see what's going on.
Great, thank you very much. Sharon?
So, good evening, everyone. Um, as everyone knows, today is the annual, um, remembrance of George Floyd. Um, so, one of the things I'd like us to do is do, if we could just have a moment of silence in remembrance of, of that. Thank you. And then I'd like to announce, um, Avon Voices of Equity are meeting tonight, and I know I sent that around to our Equity Council and to the members of Spirit Council and to some of the other, um, mates in town. But the Avon Equity, um, Council, they're getting together, um, to, um, march and meet at the Avon Library and then they're gonna, um, march to the high school in which, where they will have some students and adults who will, um, speak in remembrance of George Floyd. Um, had we not been here, I'm sure we would have participated, and one of the things I know with our, um, incoming, um, equity, um, our incoming equity, uh, position, hopefully next year we'll be able to participate and do something together. So, that's going on. And then our Equity Council, um, we met last week, and we are finishing our work in that space from our, um, data composition. And so, we have some recommendations that, um, should be coming to the board, hopefully before the board, um, comes to the end of our, um, this year, so that we can recommend to the administration, um, next, well, yeah, next, by the start of next year, um, some recommendations around the special education and around, um, it's also around, um, this is a month, thank you. Um, and so hopefully those will come within the next couple of weeks before we shut down. Um, and those are the two things that I have.
Um, so, part of that Equity Council, we're coming first. I, we, I talked, I know we were doing some looking at the curriculum. Are we still in the process of that, or?
Yeah, that's going to be certainly long-term efforts, uh, in looking at really medical entry points and what tools we're going to use to do that review. So, some of our vertical teams, which are our A twelve, Alliance team, have taken on some very specific goals to looking at curriculum through that lens of that data. So, that will be ongoing work, and I'm happy to update the board that.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, I only have two, um, positive shout-outs because I have far too many children, and so, so I gotta give credit to the high school first. I have seniors this year, and the prom was such a great job that they did there, and they've done so many, today with the senior outing, first one, they give those to the teachers up there and to, um, Mr. Patrina about just all of the sort of normal activities that the high school was having to do, and they, um, for it. And then also, I do have a sixth grader who has a recognition, and they too have really included, um, which at first I wasn't sure how it would work, and I was wrong. Um, they've included the distance learning kids in the school programs that they've been doing, and I think that's amazing. I've had a few distance learners come and say, you know, thankful so, they've learned their homeschools in helping them, so kudos to the sixth grade teachers. Thank you. I'm gonna forget.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'd rather come up with something.
So, Sharon? Um, I just wanna, um, commend Sue for running our Equity Council, and I think the group meeting, we've been working for a very long time on a lot of these details because I think it's not about me, they've got root problems trying to get to some places of actual growth and, um, success. So, I, I just wanna commend the group, because it's a really amazing group of people, and we have worked hard, and some of the days are easy and some of the days are hard, but they're two-hour meetings, and we sit and we work and we do make, we break down into small groups and we get good groups, and it, I just feel that this week, I, I feel like we're really making some headway and making some good choices and great, getting some good information, and I just wanna say it's a joy to be on that, and it's, it's, thank you very much for all your work, and Sharon works hard, and it's, it's a good group of people. I'm really proud of what's going on.
It'd be great to collaborate on that. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. See you.
Just wanted to let the board know that last Thursday was our annual Staff Recognition Day in Simmsberry Public Schools, where we honor not only this year's retirees, but folks who are celebrating milestone years of service in the Simmsberry Public Schools, starting at ten years, and this year we did go all the way up to someone with fifty years of service. Um, Kathy Gilino at Simmsberry High School, our retired English teacher, who after her retirement continued to work in our writing lab. So, Kathy, uh, achieved a fifty-year plate that Steve Patrina made her hold over her head like she had one wibble.
Yep.
So, it was, it was fun. Um, and while we weren't able to do the, um, big gathering across the district, uh, what we did was split up and Matt and Sue and I each took bags of the gifts to the different schools and went and personally saw the teachers. It was actually part two of Staff Recognition Day, um, because on, uh, about a month ago, four, four weeks earlier, um, we had honored the people who missed their celebration in 2020 because of COVID. So, we did a two-parter this year, and I certainly would be remiss if I didn't thank Cindy Frelinger for all of her work in making that.
And a huge thank you to the staff who did all those milestones. And sorry if you're probably a part of it.
Next year.
Yeah. We started to celebrate in 2021 and 22, our holiday next year.
So, just a, a couple of quick things, um, follow-up on, I think Tara and Sharon's comments. You know, the, the recommendations coming out of this committee, the timing of them, and I know it's, it's been a while coming, and it's been hard work, but the timing is actually perfect because as we wind down this school year, and when we look forward to reboot, and we wire our strategic plan, right, because there's absurd other things in the district that are put on hold, I think we have a real opportunity to hit some high levels, to be coherent about it, simplify for everybody, and really move forward in a positive way. Um, so, I too thank you for your efforts and, uh, look forward to talking more about it. I wanted to, just again, on, on the positive news front, right, the last several weeks, um, the COVID situation and the levels of the virus, uh, we've really seen significant improvement. We've seen significant improvement locally, uh, across the state, um, and national, and that's just really a, a, a positive thing. And I have a couple of data points that were shared on my call with the Department of the Valley Health District today that I think are just incredibly encouraging because we have two factors, right? We have a rapidly increasing vaccination rate and pretty significantly decreasing rate of positivity in the virus. And if those two things, uh, continue with that trajectory, you know, the Department of the Valley Health District feels very good about how we're opening up next year. Uh, I'm preparing to send a letter out Friday to both our staff, our families, thanking them for all their efforts and the collaboration, um, and talk about the fact we can't wait to welcome back a hundred percent of our students to our school building next year, uh, and really look forward to, to doing that. So, our planning, uh, phase will start, but we have, you know, ages fifteen year and up already, um, in the Department of the Valley Towns combined, sixty-eight percent of individuals are fully vaccinated. You know, and then you take that to sixty-five and up, it's nearly one hundred percent. So, you know, the vulnerable populations we were so concerned about have been taken care of, and I think you're, you're seeing the benefits of that statewide rate now and locally, and I think it's really encouraging. It has been, uh, a successful year, but a tough year that's challenged all of us in different ways. And I think we can see that right at, you know, at the end of the tunnel, and I think we need to keep on. We have only a couple, couple of weeks left. Um, you know, the State Department of Education, Department of Public Health released that the mask mandate, while being lifted in other places, is still very firmly in place inside school buildings. Um, and I think that's a situation that will get reassessed over the summer, uh, and we'll see where we are. But I mean, we remain optimistic and hopeful that the beginning of the school year will be very marginalized. We know we'll react and respond, uh, to what we see based on experiences we had, and it will be a very, very good show. So, I just wanted to, uh, share that. I know we have a petite staff, but they, they continue to grind through and, uh, excited to be here at Charreville tonight, uh, and remind people that this is a decision that the board made to rotate, uh, the amount of the school buildings, and I know we're gonna continue with it next year as we get back into the regular reporting and, uh, academic discussions of the school, so I know we look forward to it, so.
Well, that's great, and thank you for sharing all of that, and a heartfelt thanks for, thanks for all of us on the board, for the compliance and for everybody wearing their masks and doing their part and helping us get to this really great milestone. Um, and, uh, to everybody who participated, whether you worked, volunteered, or got your shot, thank you. Um, so, three more weeks, people. We're almost there. Do you want to acknowledge Alex is here tonight?
Oh.
Oh, yes, we're working for him.
Alex Pico, am I spelled right? Pico, all right, he's going to be our Board of Ed rep next year, so he's here to kind of join us this evening, see how it goes, and thank you very much for being here. He was just telling me he's in the midst of that A P grind, and I share a number of things. Took his, took his third A P exam today, chemistry, and, uh, looking to get through it. Great student, great, great leader at Simmsberry High School, and we look forward to that when he goes.
I think we all remember you presenting to the Arizona Traders and seeing how that doesn't even work. So, we made it a friend of ours. We wanted to have you.
Great.
Thank you. We're good? All right. So, now we're gonna move on to recommended actions, and we have a break in the smart design.
All right, so do our kind of interesting setup here. You have your little back, so I'm not gonna make you stand with your little back. I'm gonna talk about you a little bit. I, um, I'm, I'm really pleased and excited to recommend, uh, this evening that Asheria Sims Oliver be appointed Assistant Principal at Squadron Line School effective July first, two thousand twenty-one. Um, you know, as Superintendent, I am thrilled to bring Asheria on board. We started this process, and those that have been in the district a while know it's, uh, it is quite a process, right? We had over a hundred applicants for this position. So, what people don't realize is there are not that many assistant principalships at the elementary level. So, aspiring administrators really look to try to take an opportunity to involve themselves in that process. And then the way we do it here is we have a screening process. So, Neil and Sue do a great job of kind of looking at recommendations, applications, and we do a, a look at it, and we interview a pool to start to narrow it down, and then we move those on to two full committee, uh, rounds. And Asheria from day one won the room, each one of those, and, you know, what we have before us and what I'm thrilled about is we have somebody that has multiple skills that can benefit the district from our students and our families in a variety of ways. I'm excited about that. Uh, she can talk instructions, she owns instruction, has a great professional background. Uh, she's inspirational, great energy, uh, great knowledge. When you get to know our sharp sense of humor and wit. I know she's not gonna show it tonight, you know, throughout the process, and I know we'll be greatly appreciative. So, uh, I'm really proud of you, like, and how you performed through this process. You did a wonderful job. I know it's a, a stressful situation, but continue to come forward and interview. Um, we did very fortunate to bring you on board, and I know you're here with, we have our third office, right? All right, so equally a clean, productive family, so, uh, congratulations on that. But I would ask, the board has to vote on this, make it official, and then?
We're gonna make a motion, they're gonna give you an opportunity to say something and get you officially in place. So, I would give a motion please.
So, I move the board appoint Asheria Sims Oliver to the position of Assistant Principal for Squadron Line School with an effective date of July first, two thousand twenty-one.
I will second that. And is there any discussion? All voters in favor? Aye. We're so happy you're welcome to be on board, and, um, we'd love for you to take this and mention the stuff that you'd like to say, and to.
Matt just, like, said it all, and I do want to do it. I mean, Asheria, it was such a pleasure to give that first call, and Matt said we just knew that you were gonna be, um, a candidate that was gonna make it to the first slot. And each interview, and you were telling me that, like, through our connection and bond, you even more, and be able to do that, you do, that's, that's great. So, I'm super excited about, I mean, um, we have a partner, so we're gonna do.
Um, I'm very grateful for this opportunity. I'm so excited to be able to serve as the Assistant Principal for Squadron Line, especially under the leadership of Colonel Heaven. Um, great to be here at Simsbury, it's a special place. I knew it from the first time that I found out that I'd be getting listed. Um, I feelings here, we're very happy to be here, and I look forward to the chapter on learning and growing at Simsbury and at S L. So, thank you so much.
Squadron swag. Squadron swag.
Not the best, shine.
We need to capture this. Can you do it like that? Or do you have to offside? And please do not feel obligated to say it from that.
You'll have plenty, you'll have plenty of.
We've got a lot of, down the road. Thank you, man.
Well, it's a great.
Okay. First panel, I'm not sure you're gonna be back.
Wait, what do you have?
Hmm? I was sorry, did I skip?
Yeah.
I got it. And you're, you're up. Um, minutes of May eleven. A little secret. And a second? Although, any discussion? All voters in favor? Aye. Now?
I'm abstaining.
Two of four.
And just a question.
And so, what do you, your first? Just a question. You can, yes. She can also roll if you want to.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for the guidance there. Um, now, first.
Yes, I am going to take the, uh, the first one this evening and then, and then hand it over, uh, to Neil. This is a important one in our organization, an important person, uh, to all of us. Uh, and I know that the Board of Ed certainly is aware that, uh, our business manager, Bert Pllear, has been on medical duty for some time. Um, Bert and his family have given the decision to retire. Uh, he's doing well. I talked to Bert just the other day, and he had advice to be on the Latimer Project, and the steps I had to, to take, and, uh, and let me know what had to be done. So, um, an amazing man, um, that did great work in Simsbury for thirteen years. Um, and, uh, will be, will be missed. Um, that's an awful lot to me and members of the board as well. So, I want to, uh, ensure that, uh, we make that motion at the appropriate time. You all have as one other individual, um, but thirteen years, Bert is gonna enjoy more time with his family, um, his wife and his kids, uh, and again, he's doing, he's doing well, I'm sure.
I was on his interview today, like, he did some good work, and, um, I think it was the first line he stopped. And, um, he makes you go to the home, and he did it admirably, and he brought us forward in a great light, and he was great collaborator, so, um, always worth a point to get on Bert and he would be.
Yo, another important person in our organization, Jane Ellen Peregrin, who is the Director of School Counseling. Some people like me can't stop calling that guidance, so, uh, it's the Guidance Department. Um, obviously, as some of the longtime board members know, um, this, there was a time period where, um, a woman by the name of Joan Ramsey served in this role for a tremendous, uh, period of time, was just a, uh, institution at Simsberry High School to kind of follow in the wake of Joan Ramsey. Um, Jane Ellen was actually Joan's intern when she trained for Earl ninety-two, um, and Jane Ellen had spent a long portion of her career at Avon High School in the Guidance Department before, um, coming to serve at the end of her career with us in school counseling and kind of continued that legacy of, of work with, um, not only, um, the tremendous work of, um, the Development of the Guidance Program, but the relationships outside of Simsbury with the colleges and universities and all of the folks that, um, that are part of that world. And I'll especially say, leading this department over the past fourteen months as a way to, like, end your career and do some really important work to support kids and families that are at a hard time, um, it will be a good exclamation point on Jane Ellen's, um, career. So, we have already begun the process of advertising for, because this is a position we have to get on soon. We want to get this in place, and so, um, there's a motion there for both Bert and Jane Ellen.
I move that Board of Education accept the retirements of Bert Plair effective June thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one, and Jane Ellen Peregrin effective June thirty of two thousand twenty-one. Okay. Any discussion? Just thank you for your last, and we've just, for a long time. Yeah. Really glad to see you. Thomas is what we call. This is Bert Plair. No, okay. Um, all voters in favor? Aye. And thank you.
We also have one resignation telling, Suzanne Segaras, who does an elementary speech and language pathologist. She's at Central School right now. She's served in some other schools for the past five years. This was a part-time position. Suzanne, um, uh, sent us a letter a few weeks ago that she's gonna move on to some other things, so we need to accept that this resignation effective the end of the school year.
I move that Board of Education accept the presentation of Ms. Segaras effective June thirty, two thousand twenty-one.
Any discussion? All voters in favor? Aye.
And then one more personnel action tonight that, um, as the board knows, teachers can give us three years of advance notice before, um, they retire, and it gives them a, a little bit of a, a small monetary stipend to, and help me. We do that because it helps us plan as we know, um, uh, moving forward with, with the personnel situation's gonna be. So, uh, right now, one other person is taking advantage of that, Kim Roth, who has, uh, been with Simsberry twenty, has been with Simsberry for twenty years. She's twenty-three when she gets to the end of this, um, and so, uh, Kim is currently a second-grade teacher at Latimer Line. She's been in second grade for a while. I'm sure she's probably done some other grades, but I, I know her, I know her as a second-grade teacher, um, and, and really, um, just a, a special presence at Latimer Line, and I'm glad we have her for three more years, but we do have to accept this, uh, notice.
I move that the Board of Education accept the notice of intent to retire of Kim Roth effective June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three.
Action. Jen, what do you think?
Oh, I didn't get the correction, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you.
She didn't volunteer.
Jeez, Jen. I said. Thanks, Tara. Is there any discussion other than just reading? All voters in favor? Aye. All right. Thank you very much. All right, approval of unaffiliated salary adjustment.
Okay, so, the, uh, the final which we're here, that we, uh, we go over the salary, that is, is what we call the unaffiliated group, and the reason I call it unaffiliated group, that they're not affiliated with any, uh, so if you go to the body, so, you, you, you're going to gather. The unaffiliated salary increase is two point five percent for the next fiscal year, two thousand twenty-two. Uh, in addition to the increase in salary, there's an adjustment of, uh, the share for the transfer rate when up one percent. And an additional benefit that, uh, we've got is, uh, an adjustment for the number of sick days, an upward adjustment for the number of sick days, which, um, actually makes this group not consistent with all of the other groups. So, Masai, they got it?
No, that, that just, it, it's a very diverse set of people, ranging from people who work in central office to computer technicians, to occupational therapists, security, it's just that anybody who doesn't have another place, you know, another place where they are part of the union, uh, they kind of go into this group. So, it's a very eclectic group, but a very, uh, important, important, and really important.
Um, do you want to make the motion, sir?
I will make a motion, um, I will move that salary, salary remains for the unaffiliated Board of Education employees, salary goes to the office, and it bears the interest by two point five percent.
Thank you. Any discussion on this? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, yeah. Thank you very much and thank you all for your hard work. We appreciate it greatly. Um, approval of Latimer Lane aspects.
Okay, so this is just a follow-up for two weeks ago when we had, uh, the excellent presentation by Jeff Wysensky to show, uh, where we gave you a draft of the educational aspects at that point. Um, since then, we've gotten feedback from, um, Michael Zetti, Jason Casey, Andy O'Brien, and a number of other people who have taken a look at them. A final, uh, version was, um, sent to you. I will also want to report that, um, we have really, the checklist of what's left to prepare for the grant application is shrinking. Uh, that's a good thing. And, um, Jason and Jeff are actually, Jason Casey and, and Jeff Wysensky are going to get together next week to, um, partner in going through the electronic grant application. Um, and that we're, we're well ahead of the June 30th deadline of where we need to be. So, this vote tonight approves probably the most important documents of the grant application, um, which, uh, you know, as I said, Jeff really explained two weeks ago what, what this part's about. Really, you know, you're laying out your vision for what goes into this new building.
Um, can I get a motion, please?
I move that the Board of Education approve Latimer Lane education specifications.
Okay. Any further discussion? I had a great presentation last time. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? For, thank you very much, everyone. Um, we're excited for that, right to go, bro. You know, long time coming. Glad we got here. Um, 21, 22 textbook adoption.
That's over the knees. So, at the last Board of Ed meeting, I shared with you the next recommended AP stat text.
How many of us read it?
Actually, have, have perused the text and I kind of have concerns about that. Uh, so, according to our policy, we do have a motion for your consideration this evening.
I move the Board approve the textbook adoption for the 2022, 21, 22 school year as amended by the administration.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Uh, adoption of fee schedule for use of public school.
All right, we're, uh, we're all cleaning up things from two weeks ago. So, this was present, a fee schedule to use our, um, public buildings, um, you know, mostly, mostly gymnasiums and, uh, large spaces, um, but, you know, there's also rates for classroom and things. Um, we presented it, uh, two weeks ago as an annual thing that needs to be approved. Um, and, uh, I got, I received no questions in the last two weeks, so it should be ready to happen. It's a general question between, uh, so if you will the facility to be available for it, you know, we were, words that I could quote from, is that. So, uh, we definitely, um, have some, uh, partner agreement programs coming into the summer. Um, so we're starting, we, the, the community organizations that have been contacting us, we have, um, we asked them to hold off until June 10th, um, on those requests. So, right now, we have not, um, said much. It's going to start in the summer and then I expect by fall, all the typical organizations, including, um, you know, the churches and, uh, the others will be back and ask.
Do player evaluations, hypothetically?
Do player evaluations, maybe?
Yeah.
Yeah, all right.
Why do you want a fee schedule?
I mentioned the fee schedule, the total school. Has submitted by the district.
Please do the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Karen, thank you very much. And now, we are on to our hosts.
All right, this is not a kind of cruise, so we're excited to learn, uh, what, what we've been doing and how we've organized this, this school administration along with the teachers, getting an opportunity to share something that they feel is critically important to the success of the school, the staff, uh, and their students. So, Steve and his team have selected the CLINE program, uh, which is, uh, a great part of what they do here is certainly tied into our district's plan, uh, plan in terms of the culture and wellbeing of our students. So, um, so, one intro, intro, everybody.
I think that does it beautifully.
All right, yeah. I can take it from here. There you go. All right, so, thank you, guys. Steve, I was a crystal here. Uh, I'd just like to do some introductions. I have, we have a couple of students, uh, Darren, uh, Darren is here, so you can stand up and kind of tap out a CLINE folder. A lot of Amy Brown is here as well. With us are a couple of our sixth grade students, uh, that are in Mrs. List and Mrs. Wolf's class, so they're here to share. What we want to do tonight, we do want to take you through our, just our CLINE brochure. This is a brochure that we're going to start taking out to, to our students that, that enter Terriffel School, uh, K through six each year. It's really the foundation of what we do here at Terriffel School. I mean, we have our four character traits of caring, respect, responsibility, and citizenship. And that's really the foundation of everything we do here at Terriffel School, from whether it's inside the classroom, to out of recess, to in our cafeterias, uh, we really do really try to push that. So, we just want to take a few minutes, we want to go through this, um, brochure with you, and then we are going to take you through a CLINE assembly. Uh, these are assemblies that we actually had this year. They're all virtual. Uh, normally, they're in our, in our gym and they're packed and there's just a lot of fun, the kids love the core to it. But we're going to take you through a, kind of a mock CLINE assembly, uh, for yourselves to, to enjoy. All right, so we can kind of get started here, just take a minute. Um, again, like I said, this is the foundation, that's our first thing. There's an intro there, uh, about what we do, uh, with our CLINE program. And CLINE stands for our character lives in my behavior. Uh, and that's really climbing up to that is what we try to, what we try to do. Um, and so we'll have, this is Wolf and Mrs. List. We're going to kind of tag team this, we're going to go through our, 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 our brochure here, and then we'll go on to our CLINE assembly.
Um, so, the CLINE program started back in 1997. Um, I got to Terriffel in the year 2000, so it was just getting started when I entered and, um, I heard a lot about it when I first began to teach it here. Um, the stories are that it started with a group of teachers deciding that there were a lot of behavior issues, um, going on in the building that they felt were interfering with the academics and the coesiveness of the school. Um, so, a group of teachers, along with, um, the principal, got together and formed what was called the CLINE Committee, um, where at the time it was like CLINE yet, this is the Behavior Character Education Committee. And they came up with the idea of CLINE, character lives in my behavior. They came up with the four character traits that CLINE is based on, caring, respect, responsibility, and citizenship. And, um, we worked really hard by the time I got here in the year 2000, they were, you know, every year the committee met, uh, several times a year and decided how to keep it fresh, how to keep it going, um, how to recognize the positive behaviors, um, as well as guide through the negative behavior choices. And, um, in 2005, we were recognized as a national school character, um, because the program was so extremely successful. Um, behaviors, um, became a lot better, um, the negative choices declined immensely and academics began to also increase and soar. So, um, we found it to be a very successful program that every year we still, um, meet and discuss how to keep it fresh. The CLINE assemblies are, um, something that helps keep it going, as well as the commitment of all of the teachers, all of the staff in making sure that everybody is following those CLINE character traits that we all, um, feel so important about.
Uh, and then, you know, going through CLINE, the vision, our, our, our school vision really encapsulates what CLINE is. Terriffel School community pride, uh, provides a safe, nurturing environment where mutual respect among adults and students to practice, diversity is celebrated, and where parents and families are seen as value partners in layering the foundation of lifelong learning.
Kind of the center pages there on two and three really highlight for us what our character traits are and what are at the core of our values here at Terriffel School. So, we, as Kim mentioned, really focusing on caring, citizenship, responsibility, and respect. We talk a lot about what these things look like and sound like in very kid-friendly terms, beginning, um, in kindergarten and first grade. They look and sound, um, pretty different than they do up in fifth and sixth grade and grow by nodding their heads. Um, and as Kim said, we do have a, a CLINE committee that still needs to discuss what these expectations look like. Um, and we have really, this past year or two, taken time as a CLINE committee as well, um, to make sure that our, um, district goals and visions are also folded into the Terriffel philosophy as well. So, when we look at, at caring, for example, of course, we want kids to learn to take turns and to share it with one another. Um, that's back to basics down in, in the primary grades. But we also are really working to make sure that kids are showing that consideration, um, and understanding towards everyone of their peers and their adults, um, and regardless of color, beliefs, culture. Um, one of the things that was done, if you look around our cafeteria, you can see all of these beautiful flags that represent, um, the backgrounds of our students. Um, and that was something that Mr. Baker had put into place when he was our principal as well, to make sure that we understand who we are as a school community, where we come from, and that we can celebrate that. Um, so we really tried to weave that into our caring aspects. Um, citizenship, again, all of that ties in beautifully there too. Um, at the core is that we, we take care of one another. We are a school community that, that really views itself, um, like an extended family. Um, it's one of the beauties of Terriffel School. Uh, and we certainly want to have that awareness, that sensitivity, um, that school spirit and sense of, of citizenship that matters. Um, for responsibility, obviously, we want students to be responsible for themselves as learners and with their academics, um, but we also want to see that social responsibility. And there's so much work that is being integrated at all levels with the use of picture books and, and different, um, SEL activities and lessons that have been integrated as well to make sure that we're, we're teaching our kids to do the right thing and to be able to speak out, um, if something isn't right, it doesn't seem right or feel right, um, and to be aware of how they can have that voice and stand tall, um, and, and do the right thing there, while also taking ownership of their own learning and behaviors. Um, obviously, we want to respect one another and treat others as we like to be treated, um, be considerate, be respectful, um, to one another, to the adults in the building, um, have those, those expectations, high expectations for everyone, um, about what those behaviors look like and how we treat one another, um, and how we are accepted of everyone regardless of any differences that may exist. So, we are constantly looking to celebrate these. Where we care, care a little bit about that foot assembly, um, at the CLINE assembly where we recognize kids for some pretty big acts and really great consistency, but we also have, um, some little charms for each of these character traits that are kind of like that, hey, punch, you're being good, or I saw what you did out on the playground, um, or your bus driver told me, um, that you reached out to a friend or whatever it may be. And so, these are some ongoing pieces, um, reinforcement that we try to offer as well and use that as a teaching tool. Uh, and so, I think that CLINE is so much, and the girls are going to share a little bit about what it means to them, but it's so much at the heart and it's just so integrated in our interactions with one another, with curriculum, um, and it, it just, it really flows through all that we do and most of the time, we don't even realize we're doing it, it's just at the core of who we are.
So much so, that, you know, last year, no two years ago, maybe, um, was a great story of a, uh, girl who was a senior in high school and, um, a seventh grader from Terriffel got on the bus and it was completely full. She had no idea where to sit. We go first aid school. She had no idea where to sit. She started to panic getting on the bus. And the senior went like this and made it the back of the bus. And she went all the way back and she goes, "You're a Terriffel alumni, like, you were my book buddy. Come and sit with me. Don't worry, I'll help you. You've got this." And we heard about it and we actually went and gave her a foot because it was like one of those things, she was a senior and she remembered the book buddy. They talked about CLINE together and it was like one of those things that, wow, they really do carry it with them even years after they leave Terriffel. So, we do hear stories of, they do remember CLINE and they do continue that, um, great showing of CLINE through the years of their sixth grade years and beyond. Um, so we also do school activities that help to integrate it. Um, we've done some schooling, community, community beautification, um, you know, things that help our community to show good citizenship. Um, we do a lot of charity projects, organizations. This year, you know, it was a little bit tougher, but, um, still writing cards for, uh, nursing homes. We did a Valentine's Day where they all wrote Valentine's Day cards to, uh, some local nursing homes who didn't get a chance to see their families during Valentine's Day. Um, things like that, local hospitals, things like that. So, we do try to get them to see the world beyond Simsberry, beyond Terriffel School and how to show those character traits in a lot of different activities like that, um, as well as get to know each other within the school. So, our CLINE activities, um, are presented by our school council and we meet at every grade level and they get a chance to know each other, um, you know, besides just, you know, in the hallways and on the bus, so that they really can see each other and develop those relationships, so that they do say hi to each other in the halls and they do get along on the buses and there's that relationship outside of the classroom between the grade levels to help build that sense of community and that club.
And those, and those CLINE groups, we call those kind of groups are K through six. There'll be a couple of kindergartners, a couple of first graders, second graders, all the way up through, so it's a, it's a great way for kids to, to get to help each other. Um, and then our student recognition, so we have the CLINE activities and then we have the CLINE assembly, which we're going to get to in just a minute, uh, of our recognition. And when a student goes over, over and above, uh, during that CLINE assembly, we give them a foot, they're called up, the teachers will speak briefly about what they've accomplished, they're standing there in front of all their peers in the whole school, there's a round of applause and then they step down. Uh, this year was a little different, we did it virtually, we just, we just made it work and, uh, you know, we would start in the morning around 8:30, they go about a half hour and we, we do one about once a month, so you'll be a part of May's, uh, CLINE assembly here, just a, just a couple minutes.
Uh, there are times that not everybody follows fun and does exactly what we would hope to see from them. Um, and so, there are consequences, um, and we really value those opportunities, um, to teach into how to make a better choice. Um, and we have better choicelets, um, down in the copy room. They are on a golden rod, do not use, the children, many have nightmares about golden rods sometimes, but, um, they really, um, value, um, burning a foot in these charms along the way and really take to heart, um, if they are presented with a better choicelet. These two are nodding, yet these two have, yeah, two, yeah, two, and they have only 13 days to drive, so I think they're going to be okay. Um, but it could be times that there is something that is centered down out on the playground that is left for the stellar choice, or perhaps a repeated, um, situation of disrespect to a teacher or some behavior that, um, is not the expectation in the cafeteria. Certainly, there would be a conversation and some teaching to first, and if that's repeated, then the kids do, um, sit down and have a better choice that they complete. So, first what they do is identify what was the choice that they made, um, and for the primaries, they draw a picture of what they said or did that was not the best choice. Um, and then they have to reflect and this, again, would come after some talking with an adult typically, um, to reflect on, uh, what would a better choice be? Should I be in that situation next time? Chances are, I'm, I'm going to want to go on the swings again tomorrow, or I'm going to be in the cafeteria having lunch and might want to sit next to that same friend again and, um, you know, to help them navigate, um, and to help them reflect and better plan for, um, how to make some better choices. Um, so, that's, that's definitely a very important part of our work as well. Um, and, and fortunately, over the years, we've seen a decrease in those better choicelets. Um, God love Dan Hamon, our school psychologist, who tracks those and, and Steve gets to take a look at, uh, those that come in and, you know, certainly he will support, um, whatever comes through, like, we have a little coding system if we need a follow-up conversation with those. But, um, there's also a piece on there for, you know, that home component is, is key and that's to celebrate the good that the kids are doing, but also on that better choicelet on the back side, um, there's a spot and an expectation for parents to follow through with a conversation and to kind of give some feedback to us about how that conversation went. Um, and, and just keep that line of communication going so that they are also in the loop, uh, with, with all that's happening here at school.
All right, so we're going to start our CLINE assembly here for May. Usually, we come into the gym, the music going and it's a fun, the kids are excited. Kids are excited. They come in, they sit down in a mile. You know, at Terracille School, we do second chances. We apologize, we forgive, we respect each other, we keep our promises. We never give up. We encourage one another. We laugh off the wings of climb. I also take this and roll plaque now to bring it to classrooms with Captain from Meg Evans for shine lessons when we do climb lessons here at Terracille School. So I get, I every, every week I'm in a grade level and so I kind of cycle through about a few times a year, I do, you know, a lesson that kind of involves something to do with these, these four characters. You know, climb, character lives in my behavior. I love this quote, "The choices you make affect who you are, what you'll become, how others view you. The choices you make determine your character, your identity, and those choices determine your future." And that's something we, we share each climb and you can see character lives in my behavior. It's an opportunity to talk about just things that are going on in the building, whether it's recess issues, classrooms, you know, poor behavior in the bathrooms, and we address that as a whole group. So we're all here in it from, from everyone, from myself, and then teachers can go back and kind of reflect there. So it's an opportunity as a whole school to kind of address some of those things. It's definitely been. And this is a fun thing. So we have our, our golden tray, our golden broom. The golden tray is in the cafeteria, hopefully moving back there for next year when you can see our award winners for this is just really being conscious and, you know, currently sitting in your lunchroom, what grade level, what classroom did the best cleaning up? And obviously at the end of the day, cleaning up our, cleaning up our, our classrooms. And there is a golden tray. We come in and it's going to be healed and a golden, a golden field from this break. So it's kind of a neat thing. The kids get all excited about that stuff. Kind of like eternal.
We get to sign it, you know?
Yes, they sign, they sign the tray. Yeah, so it's fun. They keep it in their, in their rooms. Kit cards, this is also something that we set up. This is, we nail these home. So this is teachers who've got a stack of them and they'll just like, it's something and we address it to the students. So we pop it in the envelope and they get mail from their teachers unexpectedly about something good that you're doing in school. So all of our teachers do that and we do that kind of on a regular basis. And so it's just a little extra that we've added over the last, you know, year or two. So now I'm here for our celebrities here, not only in any of being what this climb means to me. So we'll have you guys, if you want to come up here, you guys can speak a little bit.
To me, climb is setting good examples for people and making them feel like they belong to the school. For example, when I walk down the hall to Terracille School and see somebody, I will say, hi, how are you? It's late after morning. When I say these four words, it makes other people happy and it makes me happy. When I say this to someone, I hope that they will ask the question and make other people appreciate, feel appreciated about themselves. Climb can be shown in many different ways. When someone calls, the person comes up, someone being nearby that's studying is showing climb and that they appreciate what they do for each other. If you get a bad score, you test them until you're right. And she says, it's okay, you try your best. Showing that you appreciate other people and that they appreciate you back. Climb is showing, climb shows that you can show compassionability to the teacher. Climb, anyone you can trust, anyone you can trust is making the right decision. Character lives in my behavior. When I say this to myself, I think shows caring, respect, stewardship, and compassionability. All of these traits show climb and that you respect everyone around you. So if you fall and someone helps you, show climb back to them, say thank you. These two words will light up your day to think about doing something good for someone else. I mean, how do you feel when you do something good for someone else? I feel pretty good just saying more simple words to people of some color. When I think of climb, I think about what helps me realize what it was. The school and everyone there. I started saying hi, how are you, because someone said that team made me feel good. So I want to see other people feel good. So this is why I've been to climb. Climb stands for character lives in my behavior, but what type of character is that? To me, climb is just a way that us kids at Terracille do live life, whether or not you stay in school and they learn and learn through the classroom. Everyone understands what climb is and how to show it. Climb means that we all understand that some of our physical or emotional needs to go off the ground and ask and have a feeling and how you feel. Climb is showing responsibility to your rest and activity. Your activity is for you. You can't wait until the teacher's going to charge you. You have to wait until they take, we have to see actions and that's about it. And if you're a several, don't try to hide it. Now some of your states can change the way that you behave. Climb is showing respect to teachers, classmates, and anybody else that has helped you along with it. I don't think some people realize just how character lives in you when you're trying to help someone and they walk away and say thank you. But I rarely see that ever happen to a teacher. Climb means working together as a community. I'm not leaving one person alone with all their responsibility. If it's a fair amount, you can accomplish way more than you can. So if someone ever comes to climb, hello, caring, compassion, and maybe respect and
All right, so now we're going to present some feet here tonight as we normally do on a climb assembly.
All right. So I am going to get to present the first round of feet for this evening. And today I would like to recognize our Board of Education members with a foot. They are earning a foot for the responsibility and citizenship they have shown this year. They have shown these traits by making sure we have the supplies we needed to keep our school community safe and healthy. They also secured funds needed. They also secured funds needed to make this all possible during this pandemic. Their efforts allowed teachers, staff, and students to feel comfortable while returning to school this fall. Without your efforts, Board of Ed, we would not have been able to return from the building, engage in live teaching and learning, which we know is truly best for the students of St. Mary. Your dedication and your thoughts and concern and efforts that you have put in and continue to put in mean so much and we thank you with this foot. So Board of Ed members could please stand so we could recognize you with a foot and high five.
So just as Kit makes his way around, if you did not do this, Kit wants to high five you super. Up high, up high.
Oh, thank you. I get a foot too. That's exciting. Thanks, Kit.
Thank you.
There you go. There you go. It's turning around.
All right, yes, Central Office staff, you get a foot as well. We would like to recognize you for showing caring to all of the staff, teachers, administrators during this year. You were absolutely wonderful this year during what was probably the most difficult year for all of us. And you did this by helping us navigate through the unprecedented protocols and routines that COVID required. We always look to you guys for the advice and leadership when quarantine were needed, when they were not needed. You know, this year starting off was very scary for a lot of us in a lot of different ways. And your home approach to handling everything was greatly appreciated. You guys walking us through the steps and reassuring us that we were safe and that we were, you know, doing our best and you appreciated that. You offered encouragement and recognized our continued efforts through those positive emails that you sent out all the time and the messages that helped us stay the course of a very tense, complex during this year. So due to your perseverance and dedication, we are proud that this year was such a success and we owe that all to you and your caring character traits. So thank you.
Comes to all of our climb assemblies after a performance. So Kit, do you have anything you want to, want to share with the board? So I, Kim and I can communicate. We're the only ones that want to communicate. During the pandemic, Kit lived with me. We saw videos I put out, living. But Kit was so, like the best part is, Kit says, and Kit stands for knowledge is power. That's what it's for. You look at our building, it's knowledge and power is up building.
It was actually named by a student too. That was a contest that we had years ago and a student came up with this.
So Kit just shared with me that the best part of Terracille School is the people that are without a doubt, our teachers, our students. We truly are so fortunate to have such wonderful staff and students. And that brings us to our next. So Kit, you can head back. All right, take care. Thanks for coming.
Bye, Kit.
We have three important items here. We have principal awards and principal awards are given for extraordinary efforts with, with, with our students. And tonight I'm going to present our two students tonight with a principal award. They do say hello in the hallways. It's, they're so friendly and so outgoing. So thank you for everything you do for Terracille School and it's, it's kids like you that do make a big difference. So thank you guys. And there's just a couple pictures of our climb assemblies, what they would, what they would kind of look like. And we also give, if you can see at the bottom, I already did make out, we give students a little tiny kit in kindergarten or any student that comes, comes into our building.
And it's tradition, the sixth graders have to present those to the kindergartners at the first climb assembly of the year. And the sixth graders are as excited to present them as the kindergartners are to receive them. It's a pretty special moment.
And so thank you. Any questions or anything? That's going to wrap up.
I was going to ask, did you, did you get to do that kick to, did you pick them up? Not picture because.
I was expecting.
Did you receive them when you were there? Do you still have them?
Yes.
Do they wear all your feet that you heard them wearing?
No. I actually used up two because I was in kindergarten and then I left and then I came back.
Oh, nice. Nice. Can I, can I ask you to say something? I've got a word. Like I was just going to say my kids went here, now they're three, twelve, thirteen, twelve, and twenty-eight years old. And I just texted them that I was here. My daughter, they both texted back. You must have a lot of seeds lying around.
Well, thank you girls for having me share with them. We really appreciate that and teachers too. We appreciate that. Thank you so much. Thank you for sharing your school.
And then this is their parents.
And now we have our Spirit Council. It's all right.
All right.
They sit down with you. You're a blessed one. I wasn't sure I was pushing more here for me.
You got it.
Take your time.
Yep, if you just, yep, you can touch that down here.
Oh, boy, I'm going to have to work too, huh? Thanks.
So let me start this with a, with a little intro and then I'll give it to Sue or.
Can we just pull it up here?
Any piece of that I don't get.
Hi, Liz. Thanks so much. Okay.
All right. No problem. Let me intro you a little bit, Cheryl. So we're, we're excited to have our friends from the Spirit Council here tonight. So, um, three years ago now, this council kind of started its, started its roots. We had a community conversation in response to a racial incident at St. Mary High School that brought a lot of people out, initiated a lot of conversations, and that's a lot of the good work that we, we heard about earlier tonight. So when we got into that community conversation that was facilitated, it became clear that there was community work to be done and there was educational work. So the educational side of that, as Sharon mentioned earlier on, is called our Equity Council. The community side of that is the Spirit Council. We have members of the council here tonight to provide the board an update on where we are with the work and we're excited about that. You've got a tough act to follow.
We know.
I hand it to Sue, who I know has done a part of both committees. I know several of us have, to do some intros and fill any gaps.
Thank you. That's been really exciting work and a true great partnership and collaboration. Met many new friends and new connections and really excited to have the board here of the great work that's been happening on the town side relative to equity and access. So tonight presenting, we have co-chairs Cheryl Cook and Nicole Kodak. We have parent and business owner Lloyd Hewing. So thank you Lloyd. And our student representative, Yumiko Chopra, who has joined Spirit Council and really provides a unique perspective from the, Tanisha Brand was here. Did she have to?
She had to go pay for her sun, apparently.
And Tanisha's also, as a parent, been invaluable in providing some feedback to Spirit. So with that, Cheryl and Nicole, I will hand it over to you to start.
Thank you. So good evening, all of you. Thank you for allowing us to present here tonight and for being, being willing to engage us in this ongoing conversation. I am here tonight as the co-chair of St. Mary's Spirit Council. Spirit stands for St. Mary's Problem Identification and Resolution of Issues Together. So our mission statement is on the next slide. Oh, I'm sorry, it's not. I lied. So tonight is all about letting you know what we are doing on the Spirit Council and to talk about how we can work together to continue to promote conversation and understanding on these difficult topics and to ultimately make St. Mary a better place to live and learn. So as Matt mentioned, two years ago, today almost, Sue, Monke and I were just wrapping up the information from the community forum facilitated by the Department of Justice. And so much has happened with all of us since then. You can see our long and winding road. Hear the music. Okay. And we are here today on the anniversary of the killing of George Floyd with two frameworks, one in schools and one in the community. And we have, we're trying to give the residents of St. Mary forums to be heard. Based on our conversations with other towns, I, I think we are the only towns that have two complementary but separate groups working on these complex issues. And that is a credit to all of the people who have supported us, the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Finance, and yourselves. And we are grateful for that support. Tonight we are going to talk about how we can improve our public engagement, how we can help each other while maintaining the distinction between the missions of each of our groups. Sue has been an invaluable partner in this work and we could not have gotten this off the ground without her. With me tonight is my co-chair Nicole Kodak, our Spirit Vice Chair, Tanisha Brand, has a lead unexpectedly, our outreach subcommittee chair, Lloyd Hewing, and our St. Mary High School student and Spirit member, Yumiko Chopra. So with that, I'm going to stop talking and let Nicole start talking about what comes next.
So I'm in history. We were both born, the Equity Council, the Spirit Council of the Town, out of the May Forum. And our road has been twisty journey and I like that this graphic was, I wrestled with. It does show there's really not a beginning and an end. This is just going to be an upward journey. And we took a real big turn in September this past year when the Board of Selectmen made a resolution to declare racism a public health issue. Also, they appointed Spirit to be a town committee, which while having, having St. Mary really gives credibility and access to people that we need to work with. So our vision that we, we practiced when we first started working together is that St. Mary's a town that locally celebrates and takes action to support diversity and inclusion among her and future members of the community. And our mission is that we are diversity champions to basically make sure all voices are heard in our community and everyone can live, work, learn, and play in a safe environment and helping meaningful relationships. We have eighteen members and some town leaders as well. You can see here I'm not going to take a lot of time, but I've learned some new animation. Oh, I'm going to go back. There are the subcommittee chairs, there are four subcommittees you're going to see. And. And Sharice Anderson in the top row there is the chair of our housing subcommittee that just got appointed. And we have Lloyd on the outreach committee. We have the data subcommittee Rebecca Hatch on the right side in the middle row. And then we have Co-CDP in the third row down who chairs our events subcommittee. And that's just not, it's not a lightweight job to blind pointing at that. How are we structured? Well, after the May Forum, there was a chime race of suggestion, what can our town do better? And we met and sort of distilled it down to three areas at first. Events, to interact with different people in the town, outreach, different organizations within town and outside of town, data, and an audit on how are we doing for their form of progress going forward. We've just recently also started housing because in the center areas of the resolution, there's education, food security, health, housing, and criminal justice. And so we felt like housing was a subcommittee that didn't have a formal structure. We were already funding into a town to support equity and inclusion in Simp'very. The events subcommittee, I'll just give you enough. You can see here that we hold events every Monday, every month that, Monday. The topic is that really put us in touch with people that we would not normally have these conversations with. Right now, it's been Zoom and the library has been a miracle partner with us. And we have one coming up next Thursday on our, having a conversation with the pride community. And then we have one coming up in the 17th of June, duty is the Saturday, but celebrating duty. We always are astounded at the amount of willingness to participate in our panels with experts in the state. Like, we had the top experts in the state on the human trafficking thing in January. And it's easier with Zoom, but these are voices of influence and knowledge and a lot of people get involved with things after these conversations because they're really moved by it. And also, they change our complexion because we understand that, gosh, I think you know our community, but each one of these issues has affected our community. It's not just national or state impacts. There's people in Simp'very talking these things.
Okay, so the outreach subcommittee, the goal of the outreach subcommittee is to help to create awareness within Simp'very, within our neighboring communities of what the Spirit Committee is about. And our goal is to connect with organizations, whether it's the Chamber of Commerce, wards, different businesses, seek opportunities to go and help them to become aware of what the Spirit Council is doing and now that there are opportunities to share more information or assist them in other ways. Our goal is to help them to do that. So we want to partner with groups and accomplish that mission. The couple of things that we want to also do is to facilitate racial history discussion. There's a lot of tension within our country when it comes to the issue of race. And sometimes just having conversations with people can help to create a better understanding of why do people feel the way they do. Doesn't necessarily excuse it, but it helps to create, help people to understand. And when we all understand each other better, then we're able to better work with each other and at least know where each other is coming from. And so as I mentioned, the goal is to create collaboration and work with each other. The, another committee that now was formed is the data and audit committee. And the purpose of that group is to gather data and assess that data. Recently, Data Haven and Equity Solutions have been engaged and have been contracted to work collaboratively. And their goal, the goal there is for them to gather data, to disaggregate this data, and then to make recommendations of how we can use this data and what we can do, where we go from there. An interesting thing that has happened, or important thing that has happened recently is I think last week, the Connecticut State Senate signed the resolution declaring racism a health peer crisis. That will be moving on to the state senate. And if that passes, then that have a couple benefits, important benefits that it will generate to us as a council. One being that the state will be required to track data, as I mentioned earlier, and as Nicole mentioned earlier, our data committee is tracking data. And as the state, if the state senate passes that resolution, they will be required to track data. And so our Spirit Committee will be able to connect in with the state data collection and leverage that information to create, get better information for itself. So we just want to keep moving forward. The goal is to monitor the progress, see where we are, and determine where we want to be. And as we make progress, we can measure where we have, where we are coming from afterward.
So this is the resolution that was passed and signed. Lloyd is signing. And you can see the five areas here. Basically, the cause are that the collective prosperity lobbying of our town depends on equitable access for every resident. Two, education, housing, health, food security, criminal justice. Those are our five core areas. So really, we just wanted to spend the rest of our time talking, yes, yes, about, you know, how we can collaborate. There's some overlaps, there are some distinctions. And the student voice, I want Amika to maybe talk about a little bit, her experiences, her highlights and her hopes that she's heading off to college.
So my name is Amika Chopra. I'm here at Simp'very High School. Basically, I kind of wanted to just highlight some of the things I've done, not to like, you know.
Yeah, it's okay. You can drag that back.
No one else is done. You two go.
Well, one of the main things that I wanted to highlight was the Let's Talk event that I participated in. It was a very great conversation and a much needed one, I think, for a nation to have as well. And it was just a bunch of different analysts who came and talked. It was a very interesting experience. I personally went along from it, even though I wasn't a analyst, and I helped make the packing man go out from it. It was also mentioned in the up for a conference. There was an article about it. So that was one of the main things I wanted to highlight. I would mention that in the meetings, that in meetings, that's what I was doing. And my hopes, I think this will have to pass on to the next student, but my hopes are just to engage more students in the work that Spirit's doing by media. And I think that's, you know, I try to reach out through a club that I run at the school with, at Allen. And we just post about different events that are happening related to Spirit work, the Let's Talk event. And we try to get some involved through that, but we'd like to, I like to help more students get involved and maybe through media.
Amika, can you tell them which of those clubs, UMS?
Oh, yes. So we just started a new club this year, actually. It's called Students Color Alliance. Since it's a new club, membership hasn't like, you know, picked up yet, but we're hoping in the next year with new leadership, I think it'll be a really great club. It's basically a place where students can come together, any, like, all students can come together and listen to the perspective of other students and just talk about, you know, like inequities at the high school and stuff they want to be changed or just like, talk about their experiences that they have. So it's time to put a stake in it for them.
Lauren Bragman for a second. She was a scholarship winner for the Chamber of Commerce last week because she had a tax standing.
Can I ask you a question? Are you planning on keeping this work going where you head off next year or what you're doing next year?
Yes. So I am going to the University of Washington in Seattle. It's very far, but.
I didn't want to assume by the sweatshirt.
And so I do plan on continuing this work. I still, I don't know, I want to go into pre-med, pre-medical field and I think that there's a lot of inequities that's discussed there itself. So that is something I will be into and possibly minoring and, you know, something that deals with inequity. I'm not sure exactly how to continue it, but definitely enjoy the club, doing the club, stuff like that.
Sounds great.
So the client needs to start. Do you have a new class that will pick that up next year for you?
Yes, we do. One of the underclassmen is actually somebody that I also recommended for a supply position. And I think we have a couple of underclassmen that me and Madison are considering for that position. There are, I think there are a lot of engaged members and I think that it will be a good show. I actually hope that it's cool.
There will be one. It's easier to recruit more people than that.
It's going to be very hard to wait COVID.
Yeah.
I admire the start. It was much easier, I think. Excellent.
So one of the things we hope to do here tonight is to engage all of you in talking about, I know, Dr. Rep. Equity Council report. And we thought it was important that we come here and see where our visions merge, where they run parallel, and how we can help each other by way of communication, by public engagement. I know for us, anyway, we field a lot of questions that have to do with the school system and when we have to make that explanation, that we are two separate groups, but that we have a lot of overlap. Now, we're very unique in this. With all the other towns we have spoken to, we're the only ones who have to light it up in this way. We were in a conversation with Farmington a couple of weeks ago and they, they were just, you know, awestruck and they're like, oh, well, now we're going to have to try that, you know? So it's, it's something that, you know, we like to share with other towns also. But I think that it was important to us, and Sue has helped us, you know, sort of refine this message of how we can work together and help each other. So we're here to allow you to ask us questions, see what it is that we might be able to work together on. I think communication is a big part of that. We were bouncing some ideas off each other about maybe having some Spirit Equity update. You know, we send out a newsletter, perhaps just with some explanation, maybe, I think we were saying, like on our Facebook page or our website, highlighting events, talking about, you know, issues that have come up in one or the other group. But we're here to ask you how you feel about that.
Sure. I think, I mean, just, the data is an interesting piece, right? So both, both committees have a bigger focus. I know that our Equity Council spent a good part of their work this year, as did our, like, administrative council, really looking at data points to hone in on our focus so that you're not, so that we're not collectively touching on too many things, but we have some high leverage areas and some points that we really need to focus on if you can't help with any messaging moving forward. So it'll be interesting. I don't know what type of data you're gathering. I know it's a pretty significant undertaking from what I'm hearing, but I think already from listening to Lloyd and knowing Lloyd and shit, you know, it's important. To him, I know in conversations that, you know, we have measures or that your committee has measures. And that's important to mine too, and it's been reinforced in us in terms of our strategic plan. What are the measurable, how do we look at where we're going with things over time? So I think that's an interesting kind of intersect.
We recognize that, you know, there's a lot of data that you can't share with us and that's probably not vice versa, and there's something that we couldn't share with you. But I'm sure there are pieces of data that would be helpful for those of us to, to look at. As I said, Sue's been really great explaining the whole process to us and she guides the Equity Council. So I don't know if you want to jump in here, Sue, and talk about the data piece, but.
Yeah, I think it's just looking, you know, certainly our data represents our students and our students' privacy, right? So I think that's what Cheryl's referring to. Where some of the markers that you might be looking at relative to employment and what does that look like in the town and what does that look like in a disaggregated way? In many of the same ways that we are looking at, as Sharon and Tara referred to, our special education data, our discipline data, in looking for, or access to rigorous coursework through advanced placement or UConn collaborative courses. And what kind of themes do we see in these data points and how can we do better? And recognizing that there are things specific to education, but there are also elements as a town that we have to put our arms around. And I often say this work of equity is the work of being and the work of doing. And so I think these ongoing conversations that we're having, how do we educate ourselves about issues of impact? And what does that look like in action for the common goal of access for our community members?
One of the things we found in our Let's Talk series, and you could see the range of topics that we have talked about, is that feelings of, you know, not belonging and of being uncomfortable are common not only in school settings but in community settings. And we have had young people come in and talk about their experiences in schools, just as we have adults talking about their experiences here in town. And I think that is valuable information. I think that is something that we can share. I don't know if you want to go in that?
Yeah, she's, she's working with the investment. The, the data that we'll be getting is, Data Haven does a community well-see survey in the state, but it's not able to be disaggregated down, break it out in Simp'ver specifically. And that's one of the reasons for engaging with them in this data effort. There'll be a lot of quantitative data, but there's also a lot of qualitative data that really helps you understand people's stories. And it's represented enough that it's not just one-off when you start to hear the themes. And so I think that, you know, across the spectrum of the events that we do, it's been fascinating that the similar theme has been people not feeling like they will fit in or that they're welcome or that they're included. And so I love the climate work that, that this school is doing because it's training kids to be better leaders of tomorrow. And I think that the opportunity to share data that identified with the student level will only enrich, you know, what do we do as a town? One of the things I anticipate might be a question, might be, you know, how welcome do students who don't live here but go to school here feel versus, or families? There's just natural markers where just are curious to delve in and see, like, why do people choose not to live here? Or why do they choose to live here? Like, what is the reputation of our town? So we're really looking at all of these things. We're waiting for the final contract to be signed so we can go over seats and get those questions put out there and start the work. But it's going to happen, I think, within a few months of time. I don't think it's going to drag out for a year, getting to hear what's in there on. And now we're ready for a little bit of action, so.
So are you, are you doing that data collection through surveying with like a talent survey or how are you getting it?
Yeah, that's a great question. And we don't know the mechanisms because they'll be separate different formats because you can't just email a survey and assume we're going to read people, right?
Correct.
So that's where the experts are going to come and help us really work through.
And we have the two different companies that we've been working with, Health Equity Solutions and Data Haven. And they each have expertise in different areas of data collection. So that's what we're hoping for. My group is sort of in the final stage of, after our plan. We have been fortunate enough to, to be promised some funding, so we're looking forward to go and pull with that.
But if someone from this group would like to have a voice into, you know, what questions are asked, if others given, I think that would be helpful. Yes. And I would also say that, um, I'm trying to think about asking questions.
No, it's okay. No, I, I just think, just following what you said, if there are folks within this group that have questions that they would also like to have, may not, feel free to share those questions and then we'll be more than happy to pass it on to Equity Solutions or Data Haven so that that's part of the information that they're collecting to help us as a community to become better.
The other thing I wanted to say is we're being so thoughtful about what we do this year, but we don't want to, we want to repeat it and see, are we moving the needle? And not just be like, oh, you can't look at last year because we changed three things. You know, we really want to just be like, no, we're committing to this. You know, we really want to just be like, no, for the end of this, we're gonna.
This should be the baseline.
Yeah, baseline is that definitely.
The communications piece. Are you part of the town site or do you have your own separate website or your book?
Our website now goes through the Community Social Services site on the town site, but we do have our own Facebook page.
Because I knew I'd seen you somewhere on the town site, but I couldn't remember if you were.
We did.
Your own page or how that works?
It's the star of what we really want. You. Of course, she's having a nice. She's making us in good shape.
Yeah, she is.
And we have a succession plan. Right, we will have a student who will be like a senior, probably in the Students Color Alliance.
Yeah.
And then also a shadow, like a backup.
A junior.
A junior shadow.
Junior.
That would be committed to like understudy shadow and then take that place the next year, the following year. So they have constant succession plan.
Yeah, I think that's a kind of a, I have to hear a little bit.
Yeah.
There's another person there.
I think a big part of the communication too is we do have overlapping members on both Spirit and Equity that bring very unique perspectives. So Holt, Lloyd, Meg Evans is involved with Spirit Council. So it's important when we're attending those meetings that we are providing the update. And here's what's going on with Equity Council. Here's what is happening right now in education. And I try to do similarly in Board of Ed communications around Spirit. So I, I think that that certainly is a natural way for us to be sharing along the way. You know, as Matt talked about before, that data component was huge. And that's been a full year process for us to look at a huge amount of data and go through a very specific process about what highlighted, high leverage markers should we focus upon and change? And really get to the root cause of what we think is going on so we can look at systems and structures. And that's where those recommendations from Equity Council are being worked and we'll hear more about. So, you know, I think as similarly, when Spirit goes through that same process, that'll be important to take a look at what you're seeing and how, what you're delving into its root cause, how that aligns with what we're seeing, how that might be different. And to keep an eye on those markers to that end of enacting that mission and that mission in Simpser.
Another thing we thought was having, I'm on the communications subcommittee at Equity. So we're talking about how to communicate the equity work so people can find it easily in town, on the website. If, if there's a task for Equity and then there's a link of the Spirit or town, or whatever we were gonna call it, to make it identifiable, link over to our website and vice versa. So that people who are looking for this information about our town can find it easily and they can, they have a stuff like here where we're coordinating, where we're talking to people.
Plus, there may be some programming that we're doing that has some interest to the education community and we'd be happy to, you know, press promote those types of things also. So we thought, we all have questions for us, you know, with something that we think we should be addressing and we're not giving it work.
Or areas you'd like us to be careful, alert, to not cross the boundaries, right?
We want to make sure that, you know.
Yeah.
We're both in, you know, separate lanes, but working together.
I think, you know, I mentioned it before, you know, coming out of this year in COVID and a lot of this grassroots work, you've been working behind the scenes, but visiting public data markets. When we, every year when we started conversations or we initiated our board meetings or communicate with parents, it's just all what the focus is for the year. And I think, you know, allowing, you guys, not allowing, but sharing that information, communicating that information with you through Sue or, or shared members, I think, will help you to know the direction that we're going and if you continue to, to do that. But I think, you know, we should take a little thought time to, you know, just not just for them, but to think about that survey and, I mean, that's interesting, is there information there? Or points that we want to think about as a Board of Education of our community that maybe we could provide some input on and see what we get back. I think that's, that's something really interesting to think about.
That would be great. Neil was very kind to share some employment data with us from the town. We were doing that and we had used the data along with the town employment data, you know, in our outreach presentations. And I would say, you say, well, people usually stop and look.
They do. It's interesting data and, you know, it allows people, when you look at the town of Simpser and then you look at the state of Connecticut or the Farmington Valley, you see how, how, how the makeup and the difference, you know, it makes you stop and think. You know, it's an opportunity to say, okay, what can we do differently? What can we do better? Because, you know, the, the purpose of it is not to say, okay, this is where we are and this is where we live. This is where we are, where do we want to go? How do we get there?
Right.
But I think, you know, for me as a relief, hope that our, our shared numbers have kind of been able to keep us the old about what we've been doing between the two groups. And where our overlap is important and helpful and where maybe we won't think now.
Right, exactly.
Anybody else, you know, wanna say this, Sarah?
I'm happy to hear all that information. Very, it's great to sit together, hear what we're doing, definitely be coordinated and be comfortable.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much, Laura.
I have a question. So our June 3 event, an LGBTQ for example, we stay away from getting students involved, but I'm wondering if there would be an organization in high school, maybe a school that would be appropriate to, like if I had a contact I could say, here's the event information, here's the attending, here's the date and time, it's hosted by Zoom right now, it'll be next year, might look hybrid. But just to let them know what's happening, you case it one, two minutes at a time?
Yeah, absolutely. We have a club specifically that addresses those issues. And I can get you in touch with the faculty advisor.
When we did a similar program with the community prepared before Spirit was a thing, we had several former students come and tell their stories. I think you were there.
I must.
And it was quite moving. And it was, it really opened my eyes to having a space where people felt comfortable to share those stories. And perhaps it was because they were no longer students that they, they felt like they could do that. But the stories they shared were quite moving and, and, you know, it made all of us think there's more work that we can do to make people feel welcome and heartened to hold.
Excellent. Well, thank you. Please again.
Thank you. Good work for all of us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, right. Oh, she's a team here.
I was in your position after May 4.
I know you are. Open our teeth. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Good luck next year.
Thank you.
Well, you did here.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, St. Louis.
Okay.
I know.
Um, oh, you did your back. I saw a bunch of it. Oh, go get it. It's still nobody wants to. Yeah, so seeing that, I made sure to reject the town. Oh, I'm sorry. For. Your second time.
Sorry.
And thank you, S T T. Our next board meeting is scheduled, I actually have a quick question.
Yeah.
Our next board meeting is scheduled, she's there, June 8th, which is the high school's rain day, graduation. Do we need to be concerned?
Yeah.
I never said. I just didn't know.
I think we would see.
Graduation.
We, we would move.
Wait, wait. So what would become a special reunion?
Yeah, we would have a special, we would move the meeting.
I just want to make sure that that's. Like we all know we're not. I'm going. We're all going there.
Thank you. It's so fun to say.
All right, thank you all and.
Thank you.